I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to March and welcome to our first county commission meeting of the month. We will, we have meeting documents available by Commissioner Hiberger over on the far north side. Just ask everybody to avoid embarrassment, silence their cell phones. And if you need a listening device, contact one of the commission staff here that are present, they can help you out. Moving on to routine business, I need a motion to consider our, or motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for February 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, approve, same sign, yep, motion carries. I'll catch up to my brain here. We have bills to be paid in the amount of $545,443.09.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Comments? Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, reports available, we have one from the Minnehaha County Coroner Report for December of 2020. And we have personnel actions. I need a motion to approve our routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And, good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a few items for you today. The first is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for March. We're celebrating three, we have Cory Hartley, who is a deputy sheriff, celebrating five years of service. Jacob Krantz in Human Services also celebrating five. And then Sandy Kinder in the Auditor's Office celebrating 20. So congratulations and thanks go to those individuals.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chairman?
I just want to say Sandy Kinder was a recorder for the Auditor's Office when I joined the commission and she's been a valuable county employee all these years.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is to record volunteers in the county departments for February. Again, over 120, I think of the official count as 121 individuals serving in seven different areas. Can't do it without them, so very grateful.
Couldn't make it happen without them, thank you, Carrie.
And then the last request is a request to approve temporarily hiring one attorney over the authorized payroll budget for the state's attorney's office. Our policies allow a little bit of an overlap. The only reason we're bringing this to you for your approval is because it's an extended period. It could be up to two months. In this case, there's definitely salary savings to cover it from a military leave. So Daniel's here if you have any questions, but otherwise we're asking for your approval.
Any other questions or a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chris Lilla, we have abatements that recommend for approval.
Good morning, Commissioner, yeah, we've got quite a few of them. Most of those, Chris Lilla, equalization, most of these are pretty routine. We've got items A through F, which are all pretty standard. The city of Hartford has acquired property and once they acquire that, they become tax exempt. So our office is recommending approval of those. Would you like me to read these off this morning?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item A is the city of Hartford parcel 23390 for the 2020 property taxes in the amount of $232.70. Item B, city of Hartford parcel 23391, 2020 property tax in the amount of $156.23. Item C, city of Hartford parcel 23392, 2020 property tax in the amount of $104.15. Item D, city of Hartford parcel 23393, 2020 property tax in the amount of $226.22. Item E is city of Hartford parcel 23394, 2020 property tax for $104.15. Item F, city of Hartford parcel 23395, 2020 property tax in the amount of $104.15.
Alrighty, since we decided last week that because these are all to the city of Hartford, we could take them as one motion for six A through F.
Second.
And I need a roll call vote, call the roll.
Hi, Berger? Aye. Barth?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Karki?
Motion carries.
All right, item G is for Rod and Jean Bethke, parcel 41034, 2020 property tax in the amount of $217.12. This is another one of those, as I'd mentioned last week, where we made a recommendation at the county boards and the software didn't transfer that value over. And hopefully we'll get out of these sooner than later. I can't say we've got them all 100%, but the error was discovered. We want to fix that error and make that correction, so we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Hi, Berger? Aye. Karki? Aye.
Motion carries. UR Properties LLC parcel 41630, 2020 property taxes, 78143, is this the same thing?
Nope, this one here is actually a fire damaged property that we verified the fire. When we go out there, we assess that at that point, we document that, determine that reduction in value and thus from that point forward for that taxable year, an abatement is authorized. And so we're recommending approval.
I imagine if they did any improvements, they'd have to get a building permit and come back through you.
Yep, and then we'll add that on the next tax rolls.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Hi, Berger?
Item A?
Karki? Aye.
Oh, sorry.
We already had a majority.
Motion carries.
We already had three votes, we didn't need you.
Too fast as well.
Okay.
Item I is Burns Family Limited Partnership parcel 86869, 2020 property tax in the amount, this is a big one, $6,898. So this one here, there was a big chunk of land that was replatted and during the replat, you know, it really calls into question every time there's a replat. And our office erred in changing that land from agricultural land to non-egg land, which again, once it's replatted, that's one of the criteria that we tend to look at. Once it's platted, it's usually for development or something like that. Well, that wasn't the case in this one here and they contacted us when they saw their tax bill. So we looked at it, it is, does meet the primary use. This particular parcel does not meet the minimum acre requirements, but it does with the management unit of 80 acres. And that's where the error was, when we have the plat, we're looking at it individually. Well, once we looked at it individually and then he called and says, well, wait, I've still got all this other land as part of my management unit. So we had him fill out an ag application on that moving forward, on that specific piece, but we recognize that an omission or an error had occurred. So we're recommending changing that back to ag land value.
Alrighty.
Prove.
Second.
Call the roll.
Hi, Berger? I'm Bender? Aye. Barth?
Aye.
Karki?
Aye. Motion carries.
Couple elderly freezes.
Yep, items J and K. Item J is elderly freeze parcel 36252, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $581.29. Item K is elderly freeze parcel 46221, 2020 property tax in the amount of $334.33. Both of these were instituted by the treasurer's office, so I can't really tell you too much about them other than we also agree and recommend approval.
We have approval of J and K.
Motion, yes, prove. Second.
Okay. Motion in a second, call the roll.
Bender? Aye. Hi, Berger? Aye. Barth?
Aye.
Karki?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you.
You bet, notices and requests, there are none, planning and zoning notices, there are none. And there are no petition for compromise of lien, so now we are at public comment. Is anybody here for public comment?
Little question, do you want some more coffee?
I'm good for now, but thank you, Commissioner. Alrighty, moving on to regular business, briefing on the county coroner and medical examiner service. Mr. Snell, Dr. Snell, is he online or?
Dr. Snell, do we have you on the call?
The call working?
Yes, the call is logged in. How about we move on to the next presentation and I will give Dr. Snell a call?
Okay. Then we'll move on to a briefing on the Children's Inn Services, Amy Carter. Amy, are you here?
They're next door, they're coming.
Yep. Morning, Amy.
Morning. We were waiting to hear from the coroner, so. We were excited to hear his introduction.
What kinds of technical difficulties?
That's okay, well, good morning, thank you. Amy Carter with Children's Inn, with me I also have Michelle Lavalley, our chief executive officer from Children's Home Society. So we are just going to share a little bit of information about Children's Inn and kind of where we've been and where we're going, so let's see if this, oops. Oh, okay, I didn't know if I was moving it myself or. So just for those of us who are here that aren't familiar with Children's Inn, we are a domestic violence shelter and crisis intervention center for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse and neglect. And I share here with a picture of our first Children's Inn back in 1977. This was a two-bedroom home that we started operating for the sole purpose of caring for children who have had to be, had to be removed from their home due to abuse or neglect. Prior to Children's Inn being in existence, what was happening is if kids were in the home and they needed to be removed and law enforcement became involved, the children would end up hanging out at the police station or they'd end up riding around in the back of a police car. And clearly not ideal for kids in crisis and coming from those unsafe homes. So that is when our community said, we need to do better, let's do, create a place for these children to go. So that is why Children's Inn was first, first developed. And very quickly after opening our doors to be just a safe home for children, a woman and her children came to the door sharing that she was being abused by her husband and she asked if her and her kids could stay. So then at that time, we immediately expanded our mission to then also be a domestic violence shelter, which in 1977, we were one of the first 10 domestic violence shelters in the country. So I love to share that because I think that's something that we should be really proud of in our community that we tackled that issue. So if we fast forward 44 years, here we are today. We had a couple places in between, but this is our current location on Western Avenue. And here we provide shelter, we have our 24 bedrooms and 40 beds. We do all of our crisis intervention, counseling, case management and all of our other services there as well. So I think it's important for people to note that we aren't just a shelter, we do so much more and we really want to support those victims in any way that we can. This is some 10-year comparison stats that Michelle will actually touch on a little bit more. But if, in looking at this, the pink columns are Minnehaha County residents and the other columns are all of those that we serve. So looking at 2019, we had 288 days where we were over capacity at Children's Inn. So we know that, that the need is there and that it continues to grow and that we, we have a response planned for that. I'll also skip this slide, Michelle will come back to that. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about where we're going. This is an exciting adventure that we're starting here at Children's Inn because of the, the need and the exceeding capacity and the growth of the community. We know that we need to be able to provide more services for victims of domestic violence and child abuse. So because of that, we are expanding our facility. This is our new location, we will be located to the east of the Empower Campus on East 10th Street. So you can see there where our new building will be located. What, what our new building is going to allow us to do is, is amazing. We will be able to serve so many more people and really respond to the needs of victims in a much more dignified way and a much more confidential way and even a more safe way. Our facility currently is making all of those things a bit of a challenge. And so this just compares our current location to the, the new planned location. We'll be increasing to 46,000 square feet, going from 24 to 38 bedrooms and increasing our beds from 40 to 96. And that piece of it, really we will allow to accommodate families so much more. Currently of two to three beds in a room, we'll be able to have six or seven beds in a room that will accommodate those larger families. So we're really excited about being able to do that. And then this is a picture of what the building will potentially look like. We're continuing to finalize the building plans, but this gives people an idea of what that building will look like. And then I'll just end my piece here on some quotes that I included. These, this is the reason we do our work and this is the reason that I know Minnehaha County supports our work is because it makes a difference in the lives of victims and families and children. So a few quotes that were shared from victims as they departed from our shelter this year. "I felt safe for the first time in two years, I couldn't have done this without Children's Inn." "My time at Children's Inn made me realize how strong I really am." "I really felt like I mattered during a difficult time and it felt like home when I had nothing." And so that, that is why we do what we do and that is why I know you support us and that allows us to, to meet the needs of victims in our community. So thank you again for all of your support and I'm going to turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you, Amy, and good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, thanks so much, Commissioners, for taking the time today and to meet with us previously to review our materials this past month. I've been the CEO, I think, for 17 months and boy, have I learned a lot about domestic violence shelters, primarily because we're in the process of building a new one. But this is one of just seven programs that Children's Home Society has and unfortunately, it's the only one without a true payer source, which gives us the tremendous financial challenges. So once our new building is built, we have to fundraise or find other funds for a $4.1 million budget. So that's 71% of that budget. So we promised our board that we'd pursue every avenue for funding before we start our capital campaign. So we've been to the state lobbying for state support because there isn't any, but they have one-time funds, so we might have some options there. So we've also met with the city of Sioux Falls and had a nice 55% increase and they tied their increases to increased days in shelter over time. So we were thrilled and we're also meeting with Lincoln County. So I think what's important for you all to know is that our, as all of our communities change and grow, so do the people coming into the shelter. So just in looking at 2010 to 2019 for Minnehaha County only, we had a 47% increase in adults and children sheltered, that was 809 in 2018, or excuse me, 2019, and a 91% increase in total days in shelter, which I think is extraordinary. And that's because the average length of stay over a nine-year period went from 11.9 to 16, wow. A 34% increase and likely that's due to a lack of affordable housing. There was also a 53% increase in crisis calls that would typically go to the police or to the sheriff. But at the same time, our support from Minnehaha General Funds decreased by 38%, holding funding flat at $89,000 for the past eight years. And our support from the marriage fees decreased by 59% from a high of $62,000 to a low of today at $25,000. So our costs per day per bed are $230, which I believe Commissioner Hiberger said was about the cost for juvenile detention. So a 16-day stay at our shelter is about $3,600. So Minnehaha pays for about, a little less than one day of each stay at 140 or put another way, pays for 24 clients of the 639 that came through, less than 4% of the total. So look, I know the budgets are so tight with everybody at the counties, but if there's anything that can be done, we're certainly at a time that it's most important to us as we go through with almost a doubling of the size of the shelter. So we're building for 2030 and beyond. And we just want to thank you for your continued support. And if you'd hold the date for the groundbreaking, I think it's May 5th at 11:30. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hiberger?
Little questions. Commissioner Karki and I came out and went out and visited about a week ago, went through a lot of information. One of them, I think, I don't remember if it was you or Amy that brought up, what was the past commitment, non-verbal commitment or verbal commitment that the county had made? And we have obviously changed that, but it was to pay for?
Two days of this stay, is that right, Amy?
You want to explain that a little bit, Amy?
A long time ago, I'm not quite sure when the agreement was made between the county and the city, but that the county would pay for two days of a four-day stay and the city would pay for two days of a four-day stay for individuals from the county or the city. And so, and it was based on the shelter days from the previous year. So we would submit a request based on those shelter days of whatever amount it might be. I know, I don't know if it was last year, the year before, it was 144,000 that we requested and then we in turn got about 89,000, but the 144 was based on shelter days. And so that's the formula that was identified many, many years ago. And honestly, both the city and the county stopped following that formula quite some time ago. But that's what we've revisited with the city and they are looking to kind of get back into following that, that formula.
Follow-up comment too. So it, obviously we, we cut back just because it's really hard to, to fund all of our nonprofits. Another thing that we did and I, I asked Carol, she wasn't sure what year, but I believe in probably about 2011 where we were dealing with a lot of budget issues. We, yeah, Jean has it here, yeah, it probably, it was actually later than that, but this, when we, oh yeah, we moved it from the general fund and we decreased the funds down in 2012 from 144 to 89,000. But the other thing we did, and I'm, I'm thinking it might have been around 2011 where we took the, your budget, Children's Inn budget, out of the sheriff's budget and moved it into all the nonprofits. And I think it was better so the commission could keep track of what we were actually doing and we did shift around some, some money at that time. The sheriff was at the meeting with Dean and I and he requested that the commission at least consider to put those funds back or to put that blind item back in his budget. That is a conversation the commission is going to have to have at some point. He asked to have it put back because he said they are a significant help to his office and he wants to make sure that they're funded appropriately. Obviously, if you do that, you still, they're still asking for more money. So I just wanted to make you aware of that conversation that happened. I think the reason was, like I said in the past, was we wanted to keep track of what we were doing for all nonprofits and by siloing one over in the sheriff's office, we've definitely, it's, it's a different look. So just bringing you aware of what the request was and we can have that discussion later, maybe at budget time or maybe before, I have no idea. So yeah, we did cut it back significantly in our amount of funding back in, it was 2012 and we were dealing with a lot of financial issues which we continue to at times, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hiberger, Commissioner Barth?
It's very nice to have you folks here. You know, I noticed that you've got the largest is charitable contributions. How much of that is in your endowment?
Are you able to answer that, Michelle?
How much is your?
Well, how much funding do you get from your endowment as opposed to green cash that came in this week or whatever?
Oh, it's 2.1 million.
Okay.
Yep, from the endowment, for, for upcoming, once the building is built.
Currently, do we know what we get from the endowment?
Oh, it's anything to offset, let's see.
Yeah, basically if we don't get other donations, that's what we use the endowment to offset. So throughout the year, if our charitable support from other donors is, is good, if you will, then we use less from the endowment.
And you guys work to build the endowment at the same time that you use it?
Absolutely, yep, we sure do.
Commissioner Bender?
So can you just remind us what the two, if we funded it two days, what, that, can you, I'm not good at math, can you just tell me what that amount would be?
I'm, I'm not good at math either, so I'm not sure that I'll have a number for you today, but it would be that we would take the, well, actually, Michelle does have it here. So if we look at the 639 individuals at 230 per day, so the cost per stay is, for 16 days is 300, excuse me, $3,600. So if we take just two of that, yep.
This is why I bought a pocket calculator.
Yes, and I wish I'd brought mine with.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but so.
And so it's, it's going to be different every year based on shelter days and so we can certainly put that together for you if that would be helpful versus for me trying to mumble through it up here, but.
So it's probably a doubling of the, if we say 90,000 and that pays for not quite one day, right? So I think 180 would.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Two days of the 16-day stay, sorry, we should have, nobody's asked us that before.
So 639 individuals?
Yes, that was the last, that was for 2020.
I just, my math was 639 times 230.
Per day times two is $293,000.
Oh, you used the, you used the 2020 dollars, okay.
Yeah, 230?
To follow on with Commissioner Hiberger's comment, our budget in 2012 was smaller than our budget in 2009 because of some cuts that we were forced to make and it was, it was really, really tough. And if I might make an additional comment, I see that our coroner is here and I noticed that on one page of his report, he talks about the death of nine infants, most of whom were sharing a bed with a larger person apparently and might be something you'd want to watch, I guess.
That's a great point you make because we do run into that a little bit in the shelter with moms that are used to co-sleeping and we address it as much as we can, absolutely. And with one of our other programs at Children's Home Society, Bright Start, that's also something that we're repeatedly educating our moms about, that the unsafe sleep practices.
One thought I have, and this will be something maybe we can discuss, this just came to mind, so it's probably way out there and if Kim Adamson was here, she'd probably stare daggers at me. But you know, our bank franchise tax can vary so much. I mean, last year I think we budgeted for a million five and we got 2.5 million. So we always, it seems like those years where we have a lot of excess bank franchise tax, we should probably look at our nonprofits and using some of that money to do that type of thing. But it's just a consider, or something that I'm throwing out there, a funding source for that type of stuff, so. Just an idea, so.
And if more people got married, we'd have more marriage monies.
Actually, that is something we talked about. Apparently that's written into the state statute, is the marriage and divorce fees. That has not been revisited from some time. So we asked our association if they could introduce that next session as, as a bill. I mean, that's, and that would benefit all 25 shelters, I think, across the state of South Dakota, so.
Which end should we raise the fees on? Entrance fee or the exit?
Or the exit, they probably.
I'm going to call us back to order here. Any other questions for Amy or Michelle? Appreciate it, ladies, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Alrighty, Dr. Snell, I think you are in the wings. Briefing from our county coroner and medical examiner service.
He's here.
And here he comes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, I apologize, you all were a lot faster than I had anticipated. So I thought I'd better come this morning and, and see you guys in person. I don't know how many of you guys heard, but first of Jan, first of December, I had a heart attack and was out of work for a while.
Oh.
Fortunately, I'm back and pretty much at full speed. But it did cause some wrinkles in how we did things. Did cause us to have to send one of our homicides last year to Rapid, two of them actually, to Rapid City, which is a decent little expense to us to have to do that. But fortunately, we're, we're back. If we can go to the next thing, there's only a couple of things I really wanted to touch on. Let's see, will this let me do it? There we go. Really, the big thing I wanted to show is the fact that we had another major increase, but this time it's really in the number of cases that were reported. The reason there's such a huge jump in that was that Sanford dutifully was calling us on every COVID death they had. Vera, not so much. So we saw a huge jump in the number of cases that were reported to the office. But, and then if you just look at those that we accepted, again, we had a huge jump, I'll take this off, 20% jump. And really that came in, those cases that we get the call on, yes, so the coroner's case, we have to sign those out, but we don't have to look at those. Because if you look, the number of non-vues was almost a 30% jump there. So that's where most of them were, our autopsies really didn't change, externals a little bit. DC kickbacks are always going to be a problem, unfortunately, that hasn't changed. But as you can see in the decline cases, you know, that was the big jump and that really was COVID. And the next thing really, our top five did change. For the first time I can remember, there were no natural deaths as our top five cases that we examined for an autopsy. Now, that's not everything we get, but those are the ones that we chose to examine. So there was 172 of those. Not a single one was a natural death this year, which is the first time that I can remember that's occurred. So that was, I thought, a big thing. Our matters of death, really not so much changed there, accidents and naturals always are the issue. And again, you can see that with that. Those that we examine, again, naturals and accidents are the same thing there. One thing that I did point out was that the number of undeterminants is 5%. I've always said we had a good low rate for that. If you look at our infant deaths, now, the infant deaths accounted for four of those undetermined, there's only eight of them. If you take those out, our undetermined rate drops down to just about 2%. I did reach out to another major metropolitan region near us, their undetermined rate is 1.6%. So we're slightly above that. But again, they take in a tremendous number. And so I don't know if that's a difference in what we see or really what that is. If we look at those infant deaths, we actually had nine this year. And here's the big scorching thing, I think, is eight of that nine were bed sharing with their parents. And I think that's the telling sign there that we see across the state. When we look at state infant deaths, is the majority of those are because they are bed sharing with those adults. Four of the infants were undetermined of the nine, four of them were positionally asphyxiated, meaning they were faced down in the bed. And then we had one that was smothering, it was. And then we had one that was smothering, it was against the mother's chest. She fell asleep with the infant against her chest. So, you know, we had a fair number of infants, but the biggest problem is, is they're still bed sharing. We haven't made much progress in that. If we look at our natural deaths, heart disease and heart-related issues are four of the top five, so not really a surprise there. If we look at our accidentals, nothing really stands out so much. There was a drop in the drug deaths, increase in traffics, which surprised me. I thought, to start the year, we were seeing less because nobody was driving, but it turned out we actually ended up above. Asphyxial deaths was down, and drownings was down as well. Drug deaths, good thing is, is we dropped. As you can see, we dropped from 31 down to 25. We're still having a problem with opiates, fentanyl, methamphetamine. Fortunately, the fentanyl and methamphetamine were lower, but our straight opiates, which are prescription, actually was high, biggest jump we've had in a good while. If we then look at our suicides, we did see an increase. That was a question I got asked in the first half of the year, it actually was lower. So it was like, oh, that's good. But then in the second half of the year, it picked up. And if we look at those, we always seem to have a bimodal, spring and fall. This year, we actually had three peaks, August being our biggest one, followed by October and April. We never see the holidays. I know everybody says holidays are, we just don't see that. We always see this spring-fall type jumps. This year was interesting, we had three peaks. Gunshot wounds are still up, they're still our number one, followed by hangings, and then drug toxicity. So not really changing that top three that we see. So lastly, looking forward, as every year our toxicology costs increase a little bit, which we expect, we are seeing more of these complex type drug deaths, so that does cause us some issue with that. Transportation costs, we did see a bump there. And it's not so much that we saw an increase in what we were paying, we also saw that increase in number of cases that we were looking at that got brought in. Our portable x-ray unit, that's been a great saving factor. And fortunately, I say fortunately, we did see a few more cases getting x-rays than we had anticipated. What that'll do is that will lower down that annual maintenance fee that we charge per case that we do x-rays on. So that means it gets spread out to everybody more, so it'll be less to us. And then, again, as we see our increasing cases, as you saw those jumps in numbers, it does lead to the budget increases that we anticipate. Unfortunately, there's not much I can do now. We've tried to eliminate what we can and make some changes to those things, but unfortunately, we've kind of hit a wall on what we can change. We are still running up against cooler space, running out of cooler space. Unfortunately, with COVID, that slowed everything at Sanford down, and so our building project got pushed back again. But it's still there, we still have our space, so it still will come, we just have to wait for that. So in a nutshell, that's kind of where we're at, increased numbers. Started out, the first half of the year, we were going to beat last year. Turns out, we didn't, which is a good thing. But it's still a lot of cases, and we stay very busy for our size, I think. So having said that, any questions?
Question? Commissioner Bender?
I'm glad you're here and that you're feeling better, so I want to, I think, I just need you to translate some medical lingo for me, maybe? So when you said the top five causes of death, what is GSW?
Gunshot wound.
Gunshot wound. And then ethanol, is that alcohol?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just.
Yeah, and the reason they use ethanol is because the tox report says ethyl alcohol or ethanol, they're very specific, because there's multiple different types of alcohols that get tested for. We're looking specifically at ethanol. And that number, just for you to understand, is not just acute deaths from it, it's also chronic deaths from it. So we see like liver failure, alcoholic ketoacidosis, other long-term consequences of alcohol that result in death. And so that number is both those acute ones, which are very rare, and then our chronic ones. So those get counted as ethanol as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
I concur with Commissioner Bender, it's great to have you still here. So on suicide, do you do any toxicology on those folks? I mean, you know, I drank two fifths of vodka and hank myself.
We do alcohol on all of our suicides. If law enforcement indicate there may be some other drug, then we will step that up. Again, it's just a cost-saving measure, but we do see that. I don't have the number in front of me, but over half of our suicides have some form of alcohol or a drug on board.
And I guess then, did, did the COVID problem cause a change in your operation, and is it still causing a change?
Yes, you may have noticed last year in our budget, we did purchase our own individual pappers. The reason we did that was, one, I can't wear an N95 with my beard, and I have a couple of other staff members that have issues with N95s. The hospital graciously, for a period, gave us the top-quality pappers. And then, basically, for whatever reason, they pulled them from us and gave them to other physicians, and they gave us the old models, which basically, when they die, they throw them away, that's how old they are. So we were fortunate enough, I was able to pull together funding from several different sources. The county gave me the funding for one, and we bought four of the new style of pappers. So now we have seven of those. And part of that is, is if law enforcement comes, if they don't have an N95, they can put one of those units on. So it's the over-the-head respirators. If you see people in the photographs have the overhead unit, that's what a papper is. So we wear that on every single case that comes in. I mean, unless we know they're COVID negative, which is few and far between. But we do get, some of our outlying institutes, places, if there's any kind of symptomology that might be COVID, we insist they do a test before we'll accept the body. But again, that's, I'd say, you know, less than 10% of our cases have that, even if that, maybe it's probably not even that many. So we have to treat every case as though it's a possible COVID case, but we are not doing positive COVID cases. If it is positive, unless it's criminal, we're not doing those. And the ME world as a whole is kind of in that split. Some are doing them, all of them, and they don't care, some of them are like us, you know.
So if you're shot twice on what are positive by COVID, of COVID, it's, it's COVID or it's criminal?
Well, no, if you've got COVID and there's criminal activity, we'll post you. And then if there is criminal activity that resulted in your death, your death is that, not COVID. Where the COVID comes in is, we do have people that are dying of a natural disease but have a COVID positive. The question is, did it contribute to that death? And we have people that are COVID positive but asymptomatic, and then they're dying of a natural disease. We'll put on the death certificate COVID positive, but, you know, we're not saying their death is due to that. If we don't have defined illness associated with COVID, we will not put it on there. But we've only done like five or six COVID deaths, because almost all of those are dying in the hospital, they're not dying at home. So we really have not had that much of an issue with it, other than wearing the pappers, you know.
Commissioner Hiber?
Thanks for coming again, I agree with their sentiment, we're really glad you're okay, and we're glad you're back here. It's nice to see you in person, it's been a while. So I was going to touch on infant deaths. Are the nine infant deaths just Minnehaha County only?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you, do you have any idea, maybe not, what statewide we're losing infants because they're sleeping?
I, you know, to be honest with you, the last number that I saw, and I can't think of the number, but 80% of the ones that we see at the state level are associated with an unsafe sleep environment.
And I, just, I, I think this is a great article that, again, needs to hit our media because I think if, I know lots of people that nap on the couch with their babies, nap on the floor with their babies, sleep in their beds. I knew someone who slept routinely with her brand-new infant until that infant was two. And so people, I don't think people recognize how dangerous it is. And when you think about, we lost nine infants, that's super scary as a new mom, that you're sharing a bed or a couch or a floor with your baby and falling asleep.
Yeah, because eight of our nine were definitely, we had one, and the true SIDS is rare. And when we say rare, I mean, you have to be, there has to be nothing wrong with the infant, it has to be on its back in an approved crib by itself, with no additional things in the crib. And those are rare. I mean, in my 10 years here, which has been 10 years now, there have been maybe three in this county. And it's just because most people don't have the appropriate sleep environment. As you see here, eight of our nine went, took them to bed with them, or on the couch or something like that. So it is a big issue, and we're constantly trying to find ways to deal with that. It's just, it's, how do you get the message across?
I think we've done a, a better job of informing parents, don't leave them in a car seat, because you don't hear that as often. I think people recognize now, don't leave your baby tied into a car seat. But leaving them, putting them in bed with you is also a really, really bad idea, so.
Yeah, it, it is. And the other thing that we see, I haven't seen one in this county in a couple of years, but the bouncy chairs. They'll put them in a bouncy chair to sleep. Well, a bouncy chair is not a safe sleep environment, doesn't even say you can do it on them. But people will put them in there, and then they also don't buckle them in place. The buckling would keep them upright, but they don't, so then they slide down. So we just had one of those actually two weeks ago, another county, but we had one of those. So we do see those, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's very sad.
Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Cindy, for reiterating this issue. I wonder if we can't do a better job of publicizing this issue, you know, on a regular basis? I think, you know, I'm a grandpa, but I kind of don't handle too many newborns. I love them, but I don't want to hold them much. And anyway, it just seems like something that education has got to be out there. And of course, you don't have to have a license to have a baby. But I'm sure the, the Humane Society tells people how to care for their puppies and kitties, and we need to tell people to do a better job of informing new parents on how to do this.
And, and one comment is, they do get notified in the hospital amongst everything else. I mean, if new moms get exposed to a ton of stuff real quick, the problem with that is, is that it's so much at one time. They even sign a little form saying they understand safe sleep and everything. The problem is, is the reiterating of the importance of that after discharge and go home. So they get the training in the hospital, but it's after that, that reinforcement. And that's where the, the problem tends to be, is, is we don't see the reinforcement of it beyond that.
Maybe a checklist at the doctor's office. I know there's a lot of things that those doctors, but the babies come back in at two weeks or six weeks or whatever, and maybe that's one more thing to, to consider adding to that checklist, is that either the nurse or the doctor reminds them, do not sleep with your baby for this reason.
There's, you know, and that's just one of those, I think, too, it's something, if we can hear it outside of the medical setting, it also drives it home. Because in the medical setting, they expect to hear something like that, but out in the community, they don't get it reinforced in the community. And I think that's one of the places that, if we truly are ever going to change this, it will be there. Nothing else?
Great information, thank you, Dr. Snell.
Appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
You bet, you bet. We'll move on to a briefing, Minnehaha County Economic Development Association, from the Mowbridge native and Augie grad, Jesse Vonkert. I saw him out in the hall, is Jesse still here?
I think, there are a lot of them are in that second room, so it just takes a little bit.
He's not coming in from Mowbridge, he's just from Mowbridge. There he is. Morning, Jesse.
Good morning, thank you. Thank you, Chair, good morning, yes, Mowbridge, Mowbridge native, Augustana grad in the house, absolutely. I hear a lot of these state-funded institutions, I don't think our private school has got enough love, so I got to make sure I do a nice Augustana shout-out here when I have the chance. Well, Commission, thanks letting me come speak to you tonight. I'm here more just to have it, or to see, I'm used to saying tonight, because I'm going to a lot of city council meetings, so I need to edit my speech a little bit here, as you can tell, I apologize. So they let me to speak to you in the morning, what a nice change of pace versus 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM meetings, I really appreciate it. Many of you were able to attend our annual meeting last week, and there's some materials here in your packet that you can review later, but I wanted to just have more of a conversation with you about economic development. And I, I had the chance to serve as an intern for Makita, Commissioner Hiberger, I think, was on the commission, or was the commission designate for Makita in 2014, I believe, is when I was interning there. And I just feel so honored to be able to come back and serve as the executive director of these, of this organization now that we are in another phase. And that's, I have the pleasure of serving as the, the last executive director of Lakina Makita, and the first executive director of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, which is our consolidated name. And so we announced our annual meeting that we're consolidating Lakita and Makita into one. It's, it's been a long process that we started probably years ago, as far as conversations are concerned, but in genuine this year. And we'll end with a meeting of the members. And the members of our corporation, interestingly enough, are the municipalities in Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties. So those are the ones that have full voting rights, which we found to be very intriguing. And a good reminder that our stakeholders are the, the public, are the people in our region, whose taxpayer dollars go to fund our organizations. And so right now, in Minnehaha County, Makita, we have a formula that is put in place where each municipality pays a certain fee per number of population. And that number increases as more folks move into your town. We're going to be implementing that same formula in Lincoln County, starting in 2022, and graduating, we, growing that up. It's going to be a little bit of adjustment for all Lincoln County communities, but part of our job is to create an organization that serves those towns and their interests. And there's been tons of, of growth in, in, in that county. And so I want to move into why we chose the name Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. And we really were challenged to find a name that works for our organization, because how do you brand a region where your largest stakeholder is an investor in your organization? So our, our organization is funded fully by municipalities, utility companies, the two counties, and a variety of financial institutions. And so as we, as we worked towards branding, you know, Sioux Falls doesn't invest any money into our organization. And so we try to find a way to, to brand ourselves, knowing that Sioux Falls is a major player, right, in regional economic development. Many of the folks that move to our towns do so because they want to enjoy the high-quality life offered here in the metro area. And many of the time, they work in Sioux Falls, and Sioux Falls offers high-paying jobs with great amenities and, and, and growing quality of life. And so we wanted to recognize Sioux Falls, and that's why we use the word Sioux in our organization. And next, we want to recognize that we live in a growing metro area, right? We have, we have an MSA designation, which we can use to our advantage in our marketing efforts as we brand our communities. And so we choose the word metro, which also allows us to have conversations with McCook and Turner Counties, to see if they have any needs for economic development. As a way for us to help them as they grow, the same way we've helped Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. And then growth, that's what we do. Economic development isn't just about building permits and sales tax dollars, it's about building leadership, it's about creating connections and growing communities, which is a challenge. When many of our submarkets around Sioux Falls, their towns empty out during the day, and those folks aren't able to create those connections that are so meaningful to their economic development. And we do all this, though, by, by allying ourselves, by sharing resources. And that's where we use the word alliance comes together. We, by, by taking a little bit from each town, we're able to create a product that serves the entire area. And so we're excited to launch our first website later on this year, siumetro.com, where each of our investors will have a, will have a profile, each community will have a profile talking about their community, what amenities are there to be offered, and also how interested parties, both businesses and families, might be able to get in touch with stakeholders in those towns. At the end of the day, we are, we are paid to serve our investors, and our investors expect a return. And in economic development, it's, it's difficult to prove that return, but over time, and with enough dedication and planning, we can help them make the moves that will lead to strong economic growth. And so with that, I'll take any questions you have about Makita, Lakita, and the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance that has now been created.
Mr. Chair?
Questions?
Yes. Obviously, Sioux Falls has been the beneficiary of a lot of help from the state and stuff over in the Foundation Park and stuff. When are we going to see the state help communities like Hartford, who has the Brower subdivision that could be a, a true diamond if it were finished off properly? I mean, the state gave the city of Sioux Falls $10 million, I think, for Foundation Park. When are we going to get similar efforts in these smaller communities?
You know, that's a great, that's a great question, Commissioner. You know, I think it's challenging, because many of the times, you know, the state's interest, I think, is in, of course, growing, growing the state's economy to create, to create more revenue, right? Is part of the reasons, part of the rationale. And for us to unlock state funding in some of the rural communities or submarkets, we need to find projects to help, to help move that along. need to find projects to help, to help move that along. And so if there's a way for us to, say, for example, work with landowners around the Brower subdivision in Minnehaha County, and with the city of Hartford, to either create infrastructure development in that area, or a plan, then we can unlock some of those dollars. From my understanding with Foundation Park, I believe it was, it's a loan, a ready loan, or some other lending mechanism with low interest. And many of those towns, I think, have the ability to take on some of those additional programs, but it comes down to having the folks in leadership positions that perhaps want to pursue that. And so it's not always the case in many of the municipalities that they're thinking about, about projects like that. Some are, some have been very successful. I think of our friends in Brandon with the Corstin Industrial Park and Roeveing Industrial Park, they've done a great job of utilizing all the funding mechanisms in our state for economic development. But they've also, they've also been in good positions at good times, which has helped too. And so part of our organization, we want to help connect everybody together to show how programs might be able to be utilized better, and to, to help the state understand how some of the economies work in our rural communities.
Any other questions?
Comment? You know, it was two years ago, I think, that nationally we hemp became legal. And we had a company, Glambria, I think is the name of it, that was encouraging us to go forward with that here in South Dakota, because they were able to use that to make protein powder for beverages, et cetera, to use hemp. And so at that time, there were no processing plants in Minnesota or in North Dakota, and we waited. We didn't do anything. And others then took, ate our lunch, so to speak. Meanwhile, we're worried about the Keystone Pipeline, which would be thousands of temporary jobs that would leave our state as soon as they were done. Right now, we're faced with the potentiality of legalized marijuana. Are we going to let other states steal that money from us as well? When are we going to take action on, on these products as opposed to oil pipelines?
You know, tough question, Commissioner. I think, you know, each community and municipality has their own idea of what economic development looks like. The only thing that we can do our organization is connect people and help them understand what potentials there might be out there. You know, we're only as good as our partners, and if our partners have different focuses, then we need to find a way to utilize their focuses to our advantage. And so I think those conversations happen over time. I think South Dakota has lots of opportunity. It's just going to take us some time to get to those positions.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. Other comments, questions already? Good job, sir.
Thank you, Chair. One last comment. We're doing our Minnehaha County Bus Tour in May. We're working on that. We have a date reserved. I think it's the second or third Tuesday in May. And we'll have a nice day out, hopefully, if things, things are allowed to move forward that way.
The Commission hasn't totally decided on this, but for the first quarter of this year, we don't have Tuesday, our second Tuesday of the month meeting. So if we move forward with staying that way, I'd encourage you to consider keeping it around the second Tuesday.
Great. That would work well. That'd work well. We'll be in touch with staff about that as well to make sure we're organizing that. And we thank you for your time and your investment. We look forward to finding ways to partner with you, too, to help us all grow together.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. Moving on then, briefing on InterLakes Community Action Partnership from Cindy Dennebrink and Tammy Denning. We're keeping people queued up in our overflow room, so give them a second to get here. And here we go.
The Oscar goes to...
Morning. I'm Cindy Dennebrink from InterLakes Community Action, and with me is Tammy Denning, who is a great partner with me in our, in our ventures here in Minnehaha County. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak with you today. Yes, you have received the, the information on the services that we've provided in Minnehaha County in the last year. I won't belabor that. You can, you can all see what, what that is. We still serve a significant number of families in our rapid rehousing programs that, of course, includes Heartland House. You know, the advent of COVID, of course, has impacted us all in many different ways. And Heartland House and the other rapid rehousing programs were not immune from, from that either. As this, this virus took hold in our community and in people's jobs, our families were affected also. You know, they were not able to find jobs initially when it, it started, some of the businesses they worked at, because they're in, in many times frontline work, you know, in restaurants and, and that sort of thing, that those would, would shut down. And they did not have jobs, and for a while could not find jobs. Well, as, as time went on here, you know, some of those businesses have reopened, and now our families can find jobs. However, there's, there's reasons that they have chosen not to work in some, some cases. And some are legitimately afraid of COVID, you know, that they don't want their children going to school, so they want to homeschool them is one piece. So if they choose to homeschool, well, then they can't work, so they can't move forward with their, their self-sufficiency. Then we have, have those, and I certainly don't mean it's, it's everyone in any, any respect, but some of our families have gone through the process in the different programs in our community. And this is just one more. So they, they many times are looking for ways that they may not need to work. And so we're hearing that they're, initially, it was a lot of people were afraid to work because of COVID, and we understood that when this, this first come out, came out. But now, with the advent of people can wear masks, and with social distancing and those things, that we, we try to assure our, our families that there are ways for you to work safely. But still, we have some families that, that choose not to work. Tammy and I were just talking about that a little bit, bit now, that, that, the vaccine should help some of that, too, when it's available to younger people, and hopefully that will be sooner rather than, than later. So we will do some, some real talking with our families about, because it's free, the vaccine, and that they should, should take advantage of that. If they are hesitant about taking the vaccine, they still need to work. Everyone needs to have a way to support themselves. So that's a new challenge in our programs that we haven't had before, on top of all the other challenges our families have. Now it's this, and, and I'm probably talking about a very small percentage that use COVID as a reason not to work. But there are still those that are afraid of COVID, and afraid of COVID for their children. As I may have told you in the past, our families, their children is about all they have in many cases. And they are, many of them, very good parents, and they don't want anything happening to those kids, as none of us do. But they look at it a little bit differently than we do. So it's just another challenge for our, for our workers, for our coaches, to work with those families on, on these issues. We, at the agency, have received many different funding sources, and maybe here at the county, you've seen some of that happening, too, that there are COVID supplemental funds coming in, in just about every program we have. So then it's about trying to hire, and we are, I don't know if you hear that from other organizations, but oh my goodness, we, we could, right now, there are, I believe Tammy told me, there's around 45 families on the waiting list for homeless families with children. We've been trying to hire two coaches for a long time, and now we, we put it out on Indeed, is what the service is called. So we have hired someone coming from the East Coast. She hasn't arrived yet, but that's the place we are right now in trying to, to hire coach positions. And they are a little higher-paid position in our agency, so it's, it's, it's kind of hard to understand, but just wanted to mention that. Right now, we have over 180 kids in our program, in the Heartland House program. As you know, we don't have a specific building for Heartland House anymore, that it's, that families find a permanent housing, and we then assist with rental assistance. So when they do graduate from Heartland House, or Bright Futures, or, or ESG, or other rapid rehousing programs, they can stay. They don't have to move from where they're at to another place. This is their permanent home. So that's what's been kind of happening with those programs. Now, in addition, on the COVID piece, ICAP as an agency, we shut down last spring for two or three months, so that we could get germ guards, the plexiglass germ guards in place in our offices, get people equipped with masks, move people around, so there was social distancing. Our staff continued, the coaches continued to do visits with the families. In the summertime, they did it outside at the park, so that there was way to get more social distancing, or they did virtual. Now, because of all the precautions we have, we are able to meet with our families in person, so that, that's going much better as well. We, as an agency, and me personally, certainly learned about different computer applications like Zoom, that I had even no idea what that was, but I, I now know that, as many of us have, have learned how to navigate those different media options. At the bottom of the report is about COVID-19-related emergency funding, and that, that was a significant amount of money that came into our agency, and it's still coming into our agency. And Tammy will talk about that a little bit, and then we'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yep.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. I just wanted to touch base a little bit on the South Dakota Cares funding that we were a partner with, South Dakota Housing Development Authority. It started back in October, and we had very little time to prepare for it, and had to be used by December 31st, that we were aware of at that time. And so we were, we were shuffling and, and doing a lot of quick, quick thinking on how we can get, or how we could get households that had applied for the funding assisted within that two-year, or two-month period. And we did do it. We, our staff put in a lot of hours, and without, you know, the staff and that help, we wouldn't have been able to, to do that. But just in Minnehaha County for the 2020 South Dakota Cares, there was 1,500 applications. The total, total funding approved just in Minnehaha was about $2.2 million for rent, mortgage, and utility assistance, just in Minnehaha County. As of, you know, the end of the year, the 2020 funding was, we used about, there was $10 million to spend, we used about $7 million, and that was statewide. And so there was this $3 million that they really didn't know what to do with. Could we carry it over? Could we not? What was decided, decided with this 2021 funding, that is a brand-new funding source through the federal government, given down to South Dakota Housing, who was the administrator, and we were working with them through the partnership. And so what they decided to do is, because in this 2021 funding, mortgages cannot be paid through that funding, so they're using that excess of $3 million to use towards mortgages. As of the 19th of February, we were just given a report that the request for mortgage has already been $275,000. So, you know, that's, that's quite a bit of money that's already been, been used for that. So that will go, that will go really quick. As of the, the 2021 funding, there is $200 million just for South Dakota, we're a minimum allocation state, and so 200 million was the, the amount that South Dakota was, was allocated. And as of right now, there is a request, and this doesn't mean that anybody's been approved for this amount, but there are open, open applications, because there are still staff going through those open applications. But as of the 19th, there was 1.4 million requested for rent since February 8th, and then $275,000 requested for mortgage, and then $212,000 requested for utilities. And so as of the 19th, there was 1,059 open applications, still waiting to be processed and, and looked through. So the need is very great. The money has to be used by, well, 60% of the money has to be used by September 30th, or it's allocated back to the federal government and dispersed between, I'm assuming, the other states in, in the United States here. But I don't think we'll have any, have any problems using the money. Will we get through 200 million? I don't know that, but there is a great need. So, you know, I, I know Cindy and I have really talked about the concern of, you know, what happens in 2022, when, when there's that possibility that that money isn't there anymore. So we really fear for, you know, especially our clients and, and things like that, so.
Any questions? Commissioner Heiburger.
I've just floored that there was that much money. You'd say, talk about $2.2 million of South Dakota Cares Act money that was put into Minnehaha County for those things. And we also had the One Sioux Falls Fund, where we put millions of dollars into Minnehaha County. And I'm just wondering, now it makes me think, were there other agencies? I mean, obviously, Minnehaha County was also helping people. We poured a lot of money into rent and, and mortgages and utilities, and I don't know if the, I didn't realize it was that much. It's just kind of shocking to me. And then to think there's a 200 million for the state going forward for one year, that's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, yeah. And I'm also a part of the, the One Sioux Falls Committee, and so, you know, was involved in the approving. And so we did, you know, we did do a lot of trying not to duplicate, making sure that people weren't getting the same month paid, or landlords weren't trying to duplicate and, and take advantage of that, too, so.
One follow-up question on that. And so was it 211 that was sending people one place or the other? It's like, I'm glad you were on the board, so that there wasn't duplications, but how did, how did somebody know that, you know, is looking for help? Which place do I go?
211, the Helpline Center was the, the main point of contact. They are the ones that had opened up the application. The application was on their website, and so everybody was directed to Helpline Center to fill out that application. And then the party, or the partners, such as ourselves, were able to have access to that database and could then take the names off of the list and process those.
Another good reason to have 211.
Yes.
Commissioner Barth?
Commissioner Heiburger, they did cover a lot more counties than just Minnehaha, so that 2 million wouldn't just be...
Oh, it was.
...inroll Minnehaha.
The $10 million, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
There was $10 million for 2020, and then there's $200 million for, for 2021, but that's statewide.
But the 2.2 was for our region and not region?
For just Minnehaha County.
Oh, for just Minnehaha?
Yeah.
Okay. That was what I understood. Thank you.
And the One Sioux Falls Fund was pretty much done when we started with, with these funds. And we had to, we worked directly with landlords, they had to provide bills, so it couldn't really double up, because we were concerned about that. But it had to be an unpaid bill that we were, we were looking at, so that's how that worked. The income guidelines are quite, quite high for this funding, too. You might be interested. I think it was 115% AMI in that, that, so that 2.2 for Minnehaha serves some higher-income folks in addition to our lower-income folks than we're used to working with. The new money for 2021 is 80% AMI.
Okay.
Just to let you know that. But it can be, they can be paid for, for many months through, through September now.
All righty. Commissioner Barth?
Thank you for that info. You know, our governor had a great idea of her last State of the State speech about Wi-Fi for, or internet service for everyone in our state. So along with paying rent, paying your cell phone, paying your heat, how are we going to get internet connections to the people that are keeping their kids home, the people that don't want to go out to work but might be able to work on the internet? It's, it's a huge project, but how are we going to get that done?
For the 2020 funding, internet was approved, as long as they could give us documentation that they were either working from home and were required to do that, or if their kids were also being homeschooled, we were able to provide funding for internet, as well as the 2021. That is an allowable expense, as long as they have been directly impacted by COVID.
All righty. Thank you, ladies, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You bet. All right. Final briefing for today is briefing on, best for last, of course, Monti, IT Department. Monti Wattenbach.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me this morning. I'm Monti Wattenbach with Minnehaha County IT Department. So I want to just start off just with explaining what... So I want to just start off just with explaining what information technology here at the county does. So, we are the centralized IT department for all county departments. And as you know, we have give or take 15 different departments here at the county, all of them with different purposes and different functions, requiring lots of different software. So this next paragraph just kind of describes that, you know, as an IT department, we provide and maintain that infrastructure for all county departments. So network connectivity, internet, Wi-Fi, storage, just the basic services. And then with that foundation, we work with departments to provide software for those various different departments. So some completed projects here recently. These first two, the county aid lien application and the facilities work order application, those were AS400-based applications that we migrated to modern Windows applications that we developed. Some of these applications, like the county aid lien application in particular, is kind of unique to the county. So purchasing a solution like that is really difficult. So we find ourselves developing a lot of those applications. And we'll see a slide later on where I kind of show you what those older applications look like and what our new applications look like and what, you know, new workforce is expecting those applications to look like. We also completed a patrol in-car video solution refresh. So the solution that we had in place before was about 10 years old. So we worked with the sheriff's office to complete that. That was a little bit challenging during COVID with vendors trying to come here from out of town here this spring to replace the equipment in the cars and get that going. So that was a little bit of a challenge. So a little bit of a shout-out to Joe Bossman from the sheriff's office for helping with the logistics of all of that. You know, they really make these projects a lot easier by just handling the logistics of making sure the cars are brought in and that the vendor is there to do those installs and we make sure that that equipment's able to get onto our Wi-Fi network for offloading video and those kinds of things. We also replaced about a third of our network switches here at the county that were about 10 years old. It's one of those infrastructure projects where no one sees a value out of it. It's just something that we have to do in order to have a secure, reliable network. And every year, we replace about one-fifth of our computers. So with this last year's batch of computers, we now have tablets in all attorneys' hands. So if those attorneys want to work from home, if they want to bring their tablet to court, they have that mobility with their case manager where they can open up documents, case files, those kinds of things. As I'm going through this, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Current projects, so as you know, we implemented Tyler Munis here a while back. It was a several-year-long project. But all of these software solutions require upgrades, so even though we just completed that, we find ourselves in a situation where we have to go through another upgrade. This particular one from version 11 to 12 is basically what this is. It is going to be a bigger upgrade and there's a lot of little ones that happen all of the time. The lien application, various different lien applications that we're working on with Register of Deeds, you'll kind of see a list of them coming up here. But the Register of Deeds Office, in addition to county aid liens, records lots of other things. And some of them are really just more recordings, more so than liens. But anyways, a lot of those applications are again, AS400 applications that we developed 25, 30, I don't know how many years ago, that we're modernizing and working to migrate off of that AS400. Pre-trial case manager for that group, body worn cameras, so the sheriff's office is really just kind of starting this. They have not rolled those out to patrol or anything. The city police department has been using body worn cameras for a little bit here. The sheriff's office is rolling those out to their warrant task force group. So in those situations, they have cameras for those incidents since they're not working out of patrol cars with cameras in them. And then the last one on the list here is just network storage upgrade. So we're going to see a slide coming up here just kind of showing where our storage is being used. So our network digital storage is growing rapidly and we'll talk about that a little bit more. So jumping around here a little bit, but I've kind of mentioned legacy or AS400 applications. I've shown this exact same slide for probably five years or so, just to give you an idea of what we're referring to here. So that top screen there was the old Public Defender Case Management application and the bottom screen is their current one. That top screen probably wouldn't have worked very well on a tablet, the document management didn't work, and it's just older technology that needs to be faded out. And as our workforce, you know, evolves and we get a younger workforce, they come in and they don't even know what to do with an AS400 screen like that top one. They're not that familiar with function keys and those kinds of things. So this county dashboard is something that we created because we kind of started having to mess with all of our county-developed applications and all the icons and trying to push those to different users. So this dashboard allows county employees to just double-click on one icon on their desktop and then any county-developed application that they have rights to shows up on this dashboard. So I probably have the, I do have the busiest dashboard at the county because I have rights to all these applications as I help give input on how they work. But anyways, here is a great representation of how many different county-developed applications that we've created over the past. These are all created in the timeframe that I've been here in the past 10 years or so. So anyways, various different case managements for all the different departments. And this really for me represents a whole lot of work that we've put in and time that we've put in to evolve from the AS400 and create applications for the county to perform our business.
So I'm curious, when you look at this dashboard and it does reflect a lot of work in a somewhat complicated system. And I'm curious, is the goal to continue to develop county applications like this? Is the goal to try to migrate these on to other systems that we can purchase? I'm just curious what the?
Yep, no, I think the goal would be that we will have county-developed applications for the foreseeable future. There are some of these applications that, you know, it's hard to purchase a solution. County aid lien application being one of them. There's some of them that are just tailored to us. And then the other thing is, not to boast too much here, but there's a lot of these applications that are just better than what you can purchase. And so to go through the work to purchase an application and migrate from something we've developed to something else, I think our end-users would be wondering what we were doing because they'd feel like we were taking step backwards. So obviously, there's a cost to developing applications ourself, but, you know, purchasing applications is very expensive also and certainly not tailored. So I think we're very fortunate to be in the position that we're in. I think there's other local governments across the country that have those green-screen AS400 applications and they've got an aging workforce to support them and they're going to find themselves in difficult situation. I feel pretty good that the ones that we've been able to purchase, we have, and the ones that maybe we can't or it doesn't make the most sense, we've been able to develop our own.
Thank you.
So some remaining AS400 applications. I won't go through the whole list here, but I think there's, this is a relatively small list in my opinion. The Register of Deeds obviously has the largest amount of items there. Most of those applications are relatively small and we can work through them relatively quickly. The difference between some of them is minimal where, again, we're just recording demographics about the person, some details about that lien, so we'll work through those relatively quickly. I will highlight the equalization one on there. I know Chris has come in here before and said that he's done, so I'm about ready to take that off the list, I guess, but we do have to just wrap up some things with him as far as how they do some soil surveys and how Register of Deeds does sales. But the last one was huge and so kind of a credit to that group for making great progress there. So future opportunities, so along with our Tyler solution, we also, in addition to Munis, we have Tyler Incode, which is the property tax portion of that software. So it's really completely different software than Munis, just owned by the same company. And we're going through a process with them right now along with a dozen or so other counties to give them the feedback that they need to make sure that they're putting the features and functionality into Incode 10 to be able to handle property taxes for the state of South Dakota. Property taxes just are different from one state to the next enough that these software companies really kind of have to really make sure that they have all the features and functionality needed for a given state. And so even though they have Incode 9, they're kind of going through and reviewing that and making sure that they'll be able to handle our needs with the new version. Looking forward to moving some of our backup equipment where we replicate storage and can bring up services in case we were to have a significant event or outage here. So the backup 911 and fire training location, we'll have a server room designed for some of our equipment. So I'm kind of looking forward to being able to go to a better space where we can replicate all the stuff that we need to replicate to and have a better backup location. And then future upgrades here within, between this year and next, we'll be replacing a fair amount of storage and some server equipment, so those will be big projects for us as well. I've mentioned a few times our storage. So when I'm referring to storage, I'm referring to network or digital storage. And I'm going to start off by explaining that between 20 and 25 years ago, the county was migrating from AS400 dumb terminals to Windows computers and modernizing things in that regard. And all employees got home drives, H-drives, where they can store their documents, right? PDFs, PowerPoint presentations, Word documents, what have you. So on that volume with all of those home drives, we have approximately, we have over 900,000 files, right? Excel spreadsheets, Word documents, PDFs, all that stuff that I mentioned. Those 900,000 files or over 900,000 files is represented in this pie chart in the very smallest little sliver that you see there. Okay, I point that out because here we've been collecting that stuff for 25 years. The very large piece of the pie on the pie chart, we've only been doing for five. Okay, so that large piece of that pie is the video evidence that state's attorney uses and then they discover that to a public defender, advocate, or potentially a private attorney. So in five years, we've accumulated 61 terabytes worth of video. Additionally, we archive this video, so once a state's attorney case is closed for three months, we archive that to cold storage. So just low-cost disk that we, once it fills up, we turn it offline. So an additional 65 terabytes of videos have been in this system and back out archived. So about 120 terabytes worth of video have come into this system, half of which have been archived back out because the cases are closed. I don't see this shrinking anytime soon. With the body cameras, this is likely going to grow. There, while there are some cloud solutions that can do some of this, you know, they're more difficult to find information in. So in a given traffic event or a large case of some sort, let's say, the investigators with state's attorney go to that solution that's web-based and they download the videos that are relevant to a particular case and associate them with the case. How the city uploads their videos to that cloud solution, they're only categorized, you know, yea well, not very well, and they do not stay in that cloud solution very long, about six months. When we download those videos, we end up keeping them in our own system here for the life of the case plus three months and then we archive them to cold storage. So we have those videos for forever. So in the event of someone going to prison and needing to, if we needed to get that video back for any sort of reason, we'd be able to do that. So anyways, I highlight this because it is an expense that we're dealing with and we've found creative ways to try to keep those costs down. Fortunately for us, storage volume and hard drive capacities are growing, so that's helped us. But we'll deal with it, but it's certainly a lot of storage. And everything in between there is just normal file servers or, excuse me, Windows servers, department shares, document management that we store as well. When I did this presentation about six years ago, we had a total of 11 terabytes and now we're at 78. Keeps growing. And then I also want to just make you aware that I'm going to be requesting a security administrator as we move forward. I think we do a really good job of defending our network. I just think we're in a situation where we need to have someone that specifically focuses on security and is watching logs, because otherwise what can happen is people are busy doing other things and then reviewing logs and monitoring some of those systems isn't focused on enough. So as we move forward, I'll be requesting this and we'll see what that looks like.
You don't have a dedicated security administrator?
I do not. So that's what this would do, would be to shore that up.
That's clearly an area that the county needs to pay attention to, I think. Just even talking about all the government money that we've heard about in presentations today, the bad guys also know about all that money and the way you get at that anymore is through internet.
Yeah, and I think all of you have seen little tidbits here and there of, you know, local governments are a big target for ransomware. Sometimes they're not funded as well as banks or what have you, so they do often end up being a target. So we do, I think, a good job of defending our network, we just maybe need to focus on it with the position. Any questions?
Any other questions? Comments? Cindy go.
Pointing to you, I don't have a question.
Well, as usual, what a great presentation, Monty, thank you so very much. I have a couple of questions. Ransomware, French Bulldogs, forget it. Anyway, what about what I mentioned earlier to the last presenters about Wi-Fi for everyone in Minnehaha County? I really think that's an important thing for people that are homeschooling for security, for all of us. Do you have a way we can get that accomplished and should that be something we could work with the state to get done? Kristi Noem has that idea, it's a great idea.
So I think that, you know, that's really a question of funding more than anything, right? So I don't know that that's any sort of county responsibility or something.
Totally agree. I just want to pick your mind because you've got one. Can we, can we sell our homegrown applications to other counties and pay for security upgrades for employees, whatever?
You know, that's a good question, you know. I don't know that we can sell them and generate revenue, but I think there are probably ways that we could partner with and recoup some of our costs. So I'd probably defer to lawyers to try to figure out what that might look like. At this point, that would create additional workload. I'd probably have to hire staff even if I, you know, sold one of our case management systems to another county, I'd probably have to start hiring people just to even support them. So it is a great question. So it is a great question. It's been kind of mentioned in the past, you know. Maybe in the future, that might be something that we look at. But then again, how do you do that without burdening yourself and creating a support issue? And can you actually create enough revenue? Because I'm not sure we're necessarily supposed to be generating revenue. We might be able to recoup costs.
To that point, if I may interject, Commissioner, you know, so many of our, we talk about regionalization collaboration. I mean, it could be wastewater, it could be libraries, it could be, you know, pick an area and maybe that is an area. Technology, I mean, you and your staff do a fantastic job, but there's a limited number of people like you that, I mean, some smaller counties just don't have the resources to get top-quality people. And for us to be able to look at a regionalization of that type of thing probably would make some sense. I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't discourage it, but at the same time, if it came about, I think it would make some sense.
I absolutely concur with you on that and I would give you the example of some of the smaller counties don't have a professional planning and zoning staff. You know, their planning director might also be the veteran service officer or whatever. And so then when projects come into that county, it's hard for them to be properly vetted and done. And so then they suddenly kill it because it's too much work. But I do have one more question here for Monty and gosh, we're lucky to have you. The cost of criminal justice storage, is that, does that go, I mean, we spend a huge part of our budget on criminal justice, whether it's the state's attorney, the sheriff, the jail, whatever. Is there a cost that's added to our cost of criminal justice? When we go out and speak, I know we talk to people about how much we spend on those issues, which are, you know, if people committed fewer crimes, we could prevent raising taxes. Do you put that towards criminal justice somehow or is there a huge cost or small cost?
You know, I don't know that I have any better insight to that than you commissioners do. So as you guys know, you know, law enforcement and criminal justice salaries here at the county take up well over half of our budget. And if you look at other costs related to, you know, network infrastructure, number of PCs that we have is all going to be, you know, relatively similar to that breakout, right? So yeah, it's certainly a significant cost to the county, both staffing as well as equipment, software, so on and so forth. And I will point out, you know, kind of along these lines is I think there are some other states where the state takes a more proactive approach on supporting counties and having consistent software. If you think about it, the fact that we have to figure out our own property tax software and work with the vendor specifically and there's 66 other counties trying to do that is very surprising to me. I think there's some other states where there's a little bit better consolidation. Even if it's a software vendor solution, hey, this is the software solution for property taxes for our state. If you really want to go do your own thing, you can, but we kind of work with this vendor and so the vendor knows what legislation might affect how property taxes work in our state and you could have that consistency and potentially even some, you know, backup in the case of a small county having a treasurer, auditor, turnover that causes issues. The state could help kind of alleviate that risk in some of those counties, but that's not the case here.
Alrighty. Thank you very much, Monty. Gave you a little more time than we gave others, but you touched virtually on every department within our county, so we appreciate the input. Alrighty, last briefing and on to 15. Authorize the chair to sign the LEMP sub-recipient grant agreement. Mr. Gierman, welcome.
Good morning, Jason Gierman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. I'm here today because I applied for a grant a while back to upgrade our audiovisual at the emergency building for obvious reasons that everybody's kind of doing this and going towards, you know, a more robust audiovisual system to help out with the COVID situation. So what I'm here is to request that you guys authorize me to submit this for approval.
Is this a new grant?
This came about because of the CARES Act. So the LEMPG is a 50% funded grant that, performance grant that I use to offset the cost of our salaries, Doug and I. So we opted this year to use, to not use the LEMPG. We use the CARES Act funding, which was 100% funding. Well, the state has extra money because many of the counties that were LMPG funded opted to use the CARES Act. So they have extra money left over, the state does, and they're using this as a 50-50 grant to help some, help the counties out. And they've actually reopened it again and Commissioner Bender reviewed another grant that I will be submitting here shortly also.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sell the LEMP sub-recipient grant agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll. Oh, wait, no, I don't need a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same as I am. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. Consider a resolution authorizing the Minnehaw County Commission Admin Officer to execute or have an execution document for closing on the sale of the gravel pit.
Morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The resolution before you will help facilitate the closing for the sale of the county gravel pit. The commission has already approved the resolution of sale for that gravel pit auction. We're still in the process of determining the specific closing date. The purchaser had been out of state for a few weeks. He is now back in state, so we will be on track to close before, on or before April 9th. So this specific resolution, since you have approved those previous resolutions, would really allow any miscellaneous closing documents to be signed by the Commission Administrative Officer or the Assistant Commission Administrative Officer so that the chair would not have to attend the closing itself to sign those perfunctory documents. Be happy to answer any questions, otherwise we'd seek your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll.
Heiberg?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Carty?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Craig. End of the meeting. Legislative update. Carol, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Just a quick update on where we're at with legislative session. The bill that probably has been of most interest to all of you has been Senate Bill 181. That is the funding for the Veterans Highway Road, or the cemetery, not the Veterans Highway, but the road to the Veterans Cemetery. That bill's bounced around a little bit with dollar amount. It started with 3 million, they bumped it up to 4.7 million. The latest amendment is 1.5 million, which would be specifically just so they would take it to the entrance to the cemetery. Is what they would do with that one.
From the south side.
Yes, thank you, from the south side. 1259 is waiting in appropriations hearing. That's about rural access infrastructure. Nothing has changed on that one. 142 is on the location of commission meetings. I kind of call it a cleanup bill. That is in today, in House Local Government. And 152 continues to sail through. That is to add off-sale liquor licenses availability for the counties to do. The one thing I would just clarify on that is that you couldn't license anything that is within three miles from an incorporated municipality. And that is on its last hoop. Will be before the House floor. Questions?
Nope. 186, did you have anything on that one?
No.
186 is the funding for basically our, the link, 2 million to go for construction. That just passed the House. I got an email from the mayor, 35 to, or Senate, 35 to one, and it's on to the House. So it's a total of 3 million, 2 million for construction, so.
Yep.
So it's a good thing. Alrighty. Liaison reports. Commissioner, you been liaising?
Just a quick thing on planning and zoning. There were no appeals from last Monday's meeting, which included the rock quarry out at Rowena.
Any other liaison reports? Alrighty, new business. Commissioner?
I just would like to take the opportunity to thank the Brandon, or to congratulate the Brandon Valley Wrestling Team for their state title this weekend. It's the first time that a Sioux Metro team has won wrestling in the A Division in over 50 years, so it's quite an accomplishment.
Yep, that is huge.
Did you go to the matches in Rapid?
No, I watched them on TV, though.
Alrighty. Any other new business? Old business? Commissioner?
Were we going to have a short discussion on continuing the second Tuesday off or did you want to do that another day? We talked about it yesterday.
I was going to bring that up, yep. So, yep, so for the last quarter now, just because of social distancing and trying to conduct government business better, we decided not to have a meeting on the second Tuesday of the month and we're going to do that through the first three months of the year. So obviously, this is the first, the third of the three and also not the fifth Tuesday and I think that happens three or four times a year. So comments, any thoughts? Just looking for input on that. Are we okay? I know the Auditor's Office had a concern because most of the vendors or a number of the vendors are used to be paying weekly and they would just like a little bit more continuity, I guess, with, from the commission on when this is going to occur. That's the only concern I've heard to date about the second Tuesday meeting. Am I missing anything, Carol?
No, that continuity for the Auditor's Office, which, you know, the Auditor's Office is like facilities and IT. They touch every department down there in the county. There's none that don't interface with that. I have never found another county that meets every single week. I mean, it's unusual for us to do that, but we certainly are ingrained in doing it. My personal opinion, there's pros and cons to both ways. So it's, there's some hassles that have come across and there's some nice things that have happened to freed up that time. So I can argue both sides. One of the things you may want to do is just throw it out there if anybody has any comments to let you know in the next week before we continue setting dates. If we do or not. I would like to see us continue at least for a while. I think it's been a good thing in some ways, so.
So Commissioner Heiberg, what do you think? Three more months of?
I was looking for six.
I would be fine with doing six and revisiting it.
So it's probably not right for me to make a motion at this point?
No.
Since it's not on the agenda, but let's get it on the agenda and I think six doesn't rub me wrong.
I'm a little bit more in Carol's camp. I'm kind of ambivalent about it. I think there are things that it does really help in some respects to have that week where we can really focus hard on other projects that we're trying to move forward right now. But I think what ends up happening is that we inconvenience a few people and then we end up just having a super-long meeting after that as we try to catch up. So I'm not sure that overall it's a big win, but I wouldn't oppose it.
And going back to, you know, the reason we kind of started it wasn't more as much about business as it is the social distancing and getting everybody together on a weekly basis. If we could avoid one week, we reduce our exposure by 25% basically, so at least for the people that are here. But it does come back to business operations too, so, yeah, yeah. Alrighty. No meeting next week because it is the second Tuesday. So we will have this discussion by the, before the end of the month, so alrighty. Looks like I need a motion to recess because we will have an exec session.
Second.
Second.
A second.
Recession.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to come back in five minutes. We don't need that much time.